Call to order the November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two City Commission Organizational Meeting. Please rise for the invocation given by Reverend Jeff Bibi, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Lord God, we thank you for this night, the opportunity to gather together, to celebrate and to move on as a city here in this place, for the freedoms that you have provided in and through great leadership. We give you thanks as we gather for those who continue to serve this great nation, those who have served, and so we give you thanks. We give you thanks for the opportunities to gather and the freedoms that come with that. We ask that you bless in a special way those who have been called to office, that we would, as citizens, prepare and support them in their judgments, in their understanding, in their guidance, their leadership. We give you thanks for this night and for this community, and these things we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I would like to welcome Judge Brian Feigenbaum to administer the oath of office to Mayor Bill Partington.
Mayor Partington, please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Bill Partington...
I, Bill Partington...
...do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend.
...the Constitution and government...
The Constitution and government.
...of the United States of America and of the state of Florida...
The United States of America and the state of Florida.
...and the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach...
Charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
...that I am duly qualified to hold office...
I am duly qualified to hold office.
...under the Constitution of the state of Florida...
Under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
...and the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach...
Charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
...and that I will well and faithfully perform...
That I will well and faithfully perform.
...the duties of mayor of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida...
The duties of mayor of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida.
...upon which I am now about to enter.
On which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you. (Applause). Thank you all. Please be seated. We're going to continue now with the meeting and the swearing in. Do we go zone by zone? Or how do you want it?
We're all together.
As a group. All right. Commissioners, if you'll come down, we're going to swear you in as a group. All right. Would the commission please raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Reverend.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend.
...the Constitution and government...
Constitution and government.
...of the United States of America and the state of Florida...
The United States of America and the state of Florida.
...and the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach...
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
...that I am duly qualified to hold office...
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
...under the Constitution of the state of Florida...
Under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
...and the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach...
And the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
...and that I will well and faithfully perform...
And I will well and faithfully perform.
...the duties of city commissioner...
The duties of city commissioner.
...of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida...
Of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida.
...upon which I am now about to enter...
Upon which I am now about to enter.[263.14][263.14](Laughter).
Upon which I am now about to enter...
Upon which I am now about to enter.[269.14][269.14](Laughter).
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. 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 Good stuff. Stay right here. We're going to have a little something for your families.
Judge Feigenbaum, thank you for being here tonight. Judge Feigenbaum presides in the Seventh Judicial Circuit, but one of the great things about him is he's an Ormond Beach person, heart and soul, so we love it when we have the opportunity to have him join us. He's not quite on tonight, he's got a little more work to do for us. The other thing that's wonderful about him is he serves on the Judge David Beck Veterans Court, which is such an incredible organization that serves our local veterans here in Volusia County. So I want to recognize the families, not only tonight, but the families of our commission members, and so Lori and Ann, if you'll join me up here. And I don't know, I think my mom and dad went out to the sports complex. My nephew is playing in a championship game tonight, flag football, go Bills, Ormond Beach Bills.[343.44][343.44](Laughter). So they're not able to be here, but Lori, thank you so much for all you do. You know I love you. You keep me grounded and you're a wonderful asset to the city of Ormond Beach. I'll get emotional if I start going too far along. Ann, also, my wonderful middle daughter, my favorite middle daughter...[368.72][368.72](Laughter). She luckily has been an amazing asset. We've had some health challenges this year, and she's been around to help the family with that, and then also during the campaign, she has an amazing sense or knack for giving political advice, and that's been incredible for this time around as well. So thank you both. You know I love you and appreciate you. And now we're just going to go one, two, three, four, right down the line, and I'll let you call your families.
Tolland family and my doc family in Reels, come on up.
We need Reels.
Yeah. It won't take all night, I promise.
We need Reels.
Come on, Phil. So I'm not sure if everybody knows, but I have, we have seven kids, and we have one, two, three of our kids here, so just imagine what Christmas morning looks like. Anyway, I just want to tell you, Tim especially, thank you so much for... Oh, you get flowers.[435.31][435.31](Laughter). Thank you so much for your support and your encouragement. I am very appreciative of your willingness to let me do my thing and support me all the way, and the same thing with all of the rest of my family. I love you all dearly, and I hope that I do you proud, just like I hope to do the citizens proud. So thank you so much. I love you.
Susan, voice.
Harder than I thought. I just want to say thank you.
Let's give him a big round of applause. That's awesome. That is awesome. Okay, my turn, zone three. I would like to invite my husband to come up, Carl Persis, my son Clark Cohn, my daughter-in-law Mallory Cohn, and my grandchildren Doyle Cohn and Olive Cohn. Come on up. Come on, Olive.[495.21][495.21](Applause). Well, first of all, I want to thank my husband, who supports me 100% in all my endeavors. He's there for me all the time, even when, you know, I can get cross or get stressed, he is there for me, and I'll never forget all the great things that you do for me. Thank you so much. I love you very, very much. And I just, my family, we, I'm so proud of my family right here. My son Clark, who is like, I think, the best dad ever, he's just amazing with his kids and great, he's a great husband, and I just couldn't be more proud of you, and I just, I'm so proud of the man that you are. Yes. And Mallory, my daughter-in-law, well, Mallory is just amazing. I think, I think Clark married his mom a little bit because we're so much alike, Ann.[551.82][551.82](Laughter). We are so very much alike, but I'm so proud of all you've done in your career, and you, the sky's the limit for you, and I just appreciate the support that you all give me all the time, and I hope you know how much I love you. I love you, Olive, and I love you, Doyle. You want to say something, Olive? Do you want to say something?
Thank you for coming.[574.16][574.16](Laughter).
But thank you all so much. I did want to end with, I promise, you know, I'm going to, I will always put the citizens of Ormond Beach first. I love this city, I was born and raised here, and this is home to me, and I just wanted to do, and I will do, a good job for all of you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call up my wife Lori and my sister Brooke.[601.79][601.79](Applause). This lady here is my rock, and she's my biggest supporter, and my sister is her backup.[610.62][610.62](Laughter). Today's my dad's birthday, and I wish my mom and dad could be here. Unfortunately, they can't. But I've been fortunate to serve this city for 21 years on the planning board. I come up at night, my wife's in bed, and I tell her all about it. So now she gets here to talk about what happens at City Commission, and wake her up. So anyway, I want to thank you all for being here. I want to thank everyone in the city of Ormond Beach, like Commissioner Persis, I thank Commissioner Sargent as well, and Mayor Partington. Lori, you're, you're, you're a, you're a, we've adopted you as an Ormond Beach native, so, but as an Ormond Beach native, I love this city, and I love the people in this city because you all make the difference, and thank you all for coming tonight. Thank you.[657.12][657.12](Applause).
You're now on agenda item number six, nominations for deputy mayor, and as mayor, I will serve as chair for this process, and I'll ask the city clerk to read the resolution that's been prepared for the election of a member of this commission to serve as deputy mayor.
Resolution number 2022-152, a resolution electing the deputy mayor of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, establishing term and conditions of service, setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2022-152, read by title only.
So we will begin with nominations, and are there any nominations for deputy mayor?
Yes, mayor. I would like to, I would like to nominate Harold Brierley as deputy mayor. He's been shown a lot of leadership on the planning board and other organizations for all his years of service in the city, and I think he would make a wonderful deputy mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just a reminder, any member of the commission, including myself, may nominate a candidate for deputy mayor. There is no prohibition against nominating oneself, and nominations do not need to be seconded. Also, I believe, Randy, anybody can turn down a nomination should they so desire.
Just one thing, and I'll add, is at the end of this, since we don't have a motion on the floor for the resolution, at some point we'll need to do that, motion second.
Any other nominations? If not, we will vote on the one nomination that we have. You want us to do the resolution first, Randy?
Yes, so it's been read, so let's just do a motion and get a second on the resolution, and Harold Brierley's name will be incorporated as part of that, so, and then the city clerk can call vote.
Very good. Does somebody want to make a motion? You made the initial motion of Harold Brierley, Lori, so do you want to move 6A?
Sure. I would like to move nominations for deputy mayor, 6A, resolution number 2022-152. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And at this time, Judge Feigenbaum, if you would, please administer the oath of office to Harold, Commissioner Harold Brierley.[841.12][841.12](Applause).
Congratulations. All right. You would raise your right hand. Aye, Harold Brierley.
Aye, Harold Brierley.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support, protect, and defend...
Support, protect, and defend.
...the Constitution and government...
Constitution and government.
...of the United States of America and the state of Florida...
State of Florida.
...and the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach...
Charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
...that I am duly qualified to hold office...
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
...under the Constitution of the state of Florida...
Under the Constitution of the state of Florida.
...and the charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach...
Charter and ordinances of the city of Ormond Beach.
...and that I will well and faithfully perform...
That I will well and faithfully perform.
...the duties of deputy mayor...
The duties of deputy mayor.
...of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida...
Of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida.
...upon which...
Upon which.
...I am now...
I am now.
...about to enter.
About to enter.
So help me God. Congratulations. (Applause).
Susan, did we have any cards for audience members?
No cards.
Thank you. If not, we will move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? If not, I just need a motion to approve.
So vote.
Second.
Second.
Okay. I'll let you score that however you want, Susan. I had Brierley with the motion and Persis with the second, but also Sergeant came in with a second as well, or a third.
Or a third.
Either way, please call the vote.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 9B.
Resolution number 2022-157, a resolution of the city commission also acting as the community redevelopment agency of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, appointing a chair and vice chair to the Ormond Beach Community Redevelopment Agency, establishing term and conditions of service and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2022-157, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, traditionally, the mayor and deputy mayor have served as the chair and vice chair of this agency. I don't have any cards, I just need a motion and a second with the names included.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution number 2022-157.
Second.
And I'm assuming that's with the mayor and deputy mayor?
Yes.
And seconded. Yes, okay. Any further discussion on that? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Brierley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Brierley.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 9B.
Resolution number 2022-157, a resolution of the city commission also acting as the community redevelopment agency of the city of Ormond Beach, Florida, appointing a chair and vice chair to the Ormond Beach Community Redevelopment Agency, establishing term and conditions of service and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number 2022-157, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, traditionally, the mayor and deputy mayor have served as the chair and vice chair of this agency. I don't have any cards, I just need a motion and a second with the names included.
I'll make a motion that we accept resolution number 2022-157.
Second.
And I'm assuming that's with the mayor and deputy mayor?
Yes.
And seconded. Yes, okay. Any further discussion on that? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Brierley.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolland.
Yes.
Commissioner Sargent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And we are now on reports, suggestions, and requests, and we start with city manager Joyce Shanahan.
Staff has no report. We just want to congratulate you all and look forward to working with you.
Great. Thank you. Assistant city manager Claire Whitley.
Look forward to working with you. It'll be a great two years.
Excellent. And then city attorney Randy Hayes. Nothing to report, just congratulations and look forward to working with you as well. Thank you. Thank you. And tonight, we start with Commissioner Tolland.
All right. Well, I'm going to use my notes because I'm going to forget something, I'm sure, and I just really, again, want to thank my family for their encouragement and their support in being my biggest cheerleaders during the campaign and the election process. But I also want to thank the citizens of Ormond Beach, particularly in Zone One, for going to the polls and casting their votes. Thank you to my friends and the campaign manager and supporters to help me run a positive campaign, and that's one that the citizens of Ormond Beach deserve. I also want to thank Dwight Selby, for the past commissioner for Zone One. I thought he was in here somewhere. There you go. I want to thank him for his dedication and for his desire not to run for reelection, and thank the past commissioners, Troy Kent, Rob Littleton, for their past service while they move on to their new endeavors. I'm very much looking forward to serving the city commission alongside Mayor Partington, Susan, Travis, and Harold. I'm looking forward to working with our outstanding city manager, our city attorney and staff, and those who protect us within the city. I pledge to work hard and give my best to be available to those that I serve and advocate for a beautiful community. I would like to recommend a couple requests that Dwight Selby had mentioned at his last meeting, and one is that he serves on the First Step Shelter for the Homeless until the said time of February 2023, that he also is able to continue his good work at the Police Foundation and keep us updated on a regular basis. And I hope that we continue to give him support to continue his work promoting water quality, especially through septic-to-sewer conversion, particularly through the beachside condominium complexes. Understanding that this would require a charter change on a referendum election year, I would like the commission also to strongly consider rotating the deputy mayor position on an annual basis. I think it would give everybody an opportunity to serve their zone in that position, and I'm sure we will look towards Randy to give us that guidance and when we are able to, sorry, able to discuss it. I'm very much looking forward to a workshop where we can share ideas and some goals with one another for consideration. Again, congratulations, Mayor Partington, Susan, Travis, Harold. I have no doubt in our ability to do the good work of the previous commissions as we serve our citizens and protect our quality of life that we all hold so dear. Happy Thanksgiving and have a safe holiday.[1293.25][1293.25](Applause).
Thank you. Commissioner Tolland, Commissioner Sargent.
I'll do a better job this time. Congratulations, mayor, fellow commissioners. The campaign is now over, and the real work is begin, time to begin. It is with, it is with an honor to sit here and represent the residents of Zone Two. My pledge remains the same, to bring transparent, honest, and common sense leadership to make Ormond Beach city government work for all of us. Thank you to my family for your support and for believing in me, and I'm truly blessed. County Councilman Troy Kent, elect, thank you for the 19 years that you gave to Ormond Beach. You're going to be missed, but thank you for keeping this seat warm for 19 years. The county is very fortunate to have your leadership and knowledge that you're going to bring to there, and most importantly, thank you for being a great friend. With that, I'll say good night, and I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving.[1351.02][1351.02](Applause).
Commissioner Persis.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so happy to see all of you here. We had such a nice turnout, and I want to thank the city and the staff for doing such an excellent job, making everybody feel welcome, and having some, you know, food and some soft drinks and water for everyone. It was just a great evening, a nice time to catch up. I too want to congratulate my fellow commissioners and the mayor. I think we're going to be a great team. I'm very excited to work with every single one of you up here. I just have a lot of great feelings about what's happening, going to happen in Ormond Beach. It's just going to be great. I want to thank my husband again for being here and being my greatest supporter ever, and I'm going to thank all my friends that came here tonight.
Yay.
All of them here, they came to support me, and it means a lot when you have people that care about you, that come out and support you, you know, when you're doing something that you really believe in. So I just want to thank all of you very much for doing that. Everyone has so much to do. And I too pledge I'm going to work hard as I have the last four years, and two more years we have, and work hard to make Ormond Beach even better. Thank you all very much. Happy Thanksgiving and be safe.[1414.52][1414.52](Applause).
Thank you. Commissioner Persis, Deputy Mayor Brierley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and first off, I want to congratulate my fellow commissioners and the mayor on your elections, reelections. Got to say, it was somewhat of a shock to be nominated deputy mayor, but I thank you for entrusting me in that, that's quite an honor. I want to thank, again, my wife for me, my biggest supporter system, my biggest cheerleader, my biggest campaigner, my sister as well, and I want to thank the people, the residents of Zone Four, and really the residents of this city, because you all really make the difference. The time and talent that you give this city is, it doesn't go unnoticed. I want to say, I also want to thank our past commissioners, Commissioner Kent, Commissioner Selby, and Commissioner Littleton, who's not here, but thank you for your service. You all have been a great stewards of our city, and we can only hope to carry on the tradition. I do want to say that I did have the opportunity yesterday for new commissioner orientation. I got to ride with our great city manager yesterday, Joyce Shanahan, and meet with Claire and with Randy, and our fire chief and police chief, and I have to tell you, after touring the city facilities we have and talking to those folks, not only do we have a great city staff, we are well protected and we are well served, and we are very blessed to live in the city of Ormond Beach. And I want to thank you all for being here, and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.[1499.52][1499.52](Applause).
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Brierley, and commissioners, I think you've said pretty much everything that needs to be said. I want to welcome each of you. I too look forward to working with you. I've heard from so many people in our community who are so excited about this commission, a fresh new commission with fresh ideas and the stamp of the vote of the people moving forward. It's an exciting time to be a resident of Ormond Beach, and we're looking, looking forward to that. So welcome, and I look forward to working with all of you. I've always said, wonderful people make a wonderful city, and Ormond Beach is truly blessed to have so many incredible, wonderful people, talented, gifted folks who care about community...
County councilman Troy Kent, elect, thank you for the 19 years that you gave to Orman Beach. You're going to be missed, but thank you for keeping this seat warm for 19 years. The county is very fortunate to have your leadership and knowledge that you're going to bring to there. And most importantly, thank you for being a great friend. With that, I'll say goodnight and I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Commissioner Persis.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so happy to see all of you here. We had such a nice turnout and I want to thank the city and the staff for doing such an excellent job, making everybody feel welcome and having some, you know, food and some soft drinks and water for everyone. It was just a great evening, a nice time to catch up. I too want to congratulate my fellow commissioners and the mayor. I think we're going to be a great team. I'm very excited to work with every single one of you up here. I just have a lot of great feelings about what's happening, going to happen in Orman Beach. It's just going to be great. I want to thank my husband again for being here and being my greatest supporter ever. And I'm going to thank all my friends that came here tonight. All of them here, they came to support me and it means a lot when you have people that care about you, that come out and support you, you know, when you're doing something that you really believe in. So I just want to thank all of you very much for, for doing that. Everyone has so, so much to do. And I too pledge, I'm going to work hard as I have the last four years and two more years we have and work hard to make Orman Beach even better. Thank you all very much. Happy Thanksgiving and be safe.
Commissioner Persis, Deputy, Deputy Mayor Brierley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And first off, I want to congratulate my fellow commissioners and the mayor on your elections, reelections. Got to say, it was somewhat of a shock to be nominated deputy mayor, but I thank you for entrusting me in that. That's quite an honor. I want to thank, again, my wife for being my biggest supporter system, my biggest cheerleader, my biggest campaigner, my sister as well. And I want to thank the people, the residents of zone four, and really the residents of this city because you all really make the difference. The time, the talent that you give this city is, it doesn't go unnoticed. I want to say, I also want to thank our, our past commissioners, Commissioner Kent, Commissioner Selby, and Commissioner Littleton, who's not here, but thank you for your service. You all have been a great stewards of our city and we can only hope to carry on the tradition. I do want to say that I did have the opportunity yesterday for new commissioner orientation. I got to ride with our, our great city manager yesterday, Joyce Shanahan, and, and meet with, with Claire and with Randy and our fire chief and police chief. And I have to tell you, after touring the, the city facilities we have and talking to those folks, not only do we have a great city staff, we are well protected and we are well served. And we are very blessed to live in the city of Orman Beach. And I want to thank you all for being here and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Brierley. And commissioners, I think you've said pretty much everything that needs to be said. I want to welcome each of you. I too look forward to working with you. I've heard from so many people in our community who are so excited about this commission. A fresh new commission with fresh ideas and the stamp of the vote of the people moving forward. It's an exciting time to be a resident of Orman Beach and we're looking, looking forward to that.